February the seventeenth, seven P M. I officially call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. That is. To the Republic. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
In just.
Justice for all.
Okay, good deal. So that's gonna bring us to the next item on the agenda. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Grego.
President.
Counselor Veho.
Here.
Counselor Hensley. Counselor Broyles.
Here.
Um, and Counselor Daniel previously. Used, and I'm not sure on.
I didn't hear the last part, Holly. What did you say about Carson?
I'm not sure where Counselor Carson is.
Okay.
All right, so that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Mayor, I know that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Ms. Daniel from the meeting.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Not Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
Counselor Veho.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor Carson.
I just got on. So I don't know what you guys were voting on. I apologize. Oh, yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That moves us on down the agenda to the citizen comment. This is a portion of the agenda where we give citizens an opportunity to make their comments. We do ask that you state your name, and we ask that you keep your comments below three minutes. If you're still talking at the three minute when the timer goes off, I will politely ask you to wrap up your your comments at that time. Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind, can you please give those attendees an instruction of how to raise their hands so they can be recognized?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app to raise your hand, there's raise your hand button in the bottom of your screen. Click that it'll raise your hand. If you are on the telephone and would like to speak to raise your hand, you're gonna dial star nine.
And Ms. Martinez, I just want to clarify since I see Aaron Meltenberger raising his hand. If he's to speak on the other agenda item, he can put his hand down. We'll call on him at the point in time.
Looks like he just did. I have one that's raised their hand, mayor.
Okay, um, do you need to let that person in or do I just call out their name since I could see their name right here?
Yeah, I'm bringing them in just in case they have their video. It is Amy Price.
Okay. Ms. Price, whenever you're ready, you feel free to start.
Hey, you can all hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, we're Wade Amy Price from eighty-five forty-four County Road four south here in Alamosa. And we currently have two businesses in town. Most of you are aware of that. We would like to just make some comments or or suggestions on the new proposed property sale to a individual for an R B park near Splash Land. And there's currently four parks in or near Alamosa, and those four parks are not at full capacity most of the time. A few weekends, yes, but most of the time they are not full. The market studies show massive numbers of RVs going through Alamosa, which is true. And the fact that they're not having a place to stay is false because all it takes is a simple Google search and they're gonna probably find a spot with it within the four parks that are currently in town. Um, the typical R B here comes here for one main purpose, not all of them, but most of them, and that's the great Sand Dunes National Monument. They stay for one to three nights and they move on to their next destination. I fear with another park in town that to pay the bills, it's gonna turn into a trailer park because they're gonna have long term stays to try to keep their lights on, which will generate no income for the city from tax revenue on long term stays. That property is still currently a working cattle ranch and has historically been so. And also, we as business owners travel to and from Alamosa on those roads on both sides of the proposed property. So road improvements would need to be significantly done to not impede other business owners as well as just the residents of this area here. Rumor has it the developers asking the city to help with the infrastructure and the like. I don't know if that's true, begin rumor. We feel like we do have two businesses in town on one street that is massively in need of improvements, and if the city were to help somebody else to get their business going, it would be very disappointing for us. And the with the four current current R V parks not at capacity. I just don't feel like right now is a good time to add additional parks, and we do appreciate your time and thanks for listening to us.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Appreciate that. Okay, do we have any other attendees who would like to make any comments at this time under citizen comments? If so, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And what is the if they're on a cell phone, how do they?
Um, they'll dial star nine.
Star nine. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this time, so I will now close the citizen comment portion and turn it back over to our city manager and city or either city legal for response.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Um, so as you know, some of the direction that has been given for negotiation has been in executive session. So I'm not sure if I'm able to go into significant amount of details, but I do wanna share from a follow up perspective for some of those key points is that prior to listing the property, we did have a broker's assessment of the value of the property. We did advertise that to receive anyone who was interested. We received two proposals. Those full proposals, if if the prices are interested in reading what those proposals are, can be found on the the city's website where if you go to the agenda page, if you look at the work session on January thirteenth, those full proposals can be listed there. I do wanna caution though that those were just those proposals. Clearly, council has given direction for negotiations to staff, and so some of those items have changed. I will say, though, um, the concern of providing assistance in regards to utilities, that is not something that the city is entertaining. And beyond that, until council votes on the the contract, I'm not sure if I can give much more details. Counselor Suiso is, did you wanna weigh in on that on if I can give more details or not?
No, I didn't wanna weigh in on that. I think your level of detail is good. I had a completely different issue I wanted to address.
Okay.
Not related to the R V park.
Okay.
And mayor, that's all I have for follow up at this time, but I would highly recommend that the agenda page on the city's website has the full proposals, and then the minutes should capture. Well, we had a public hearing on January twentieth, and I don't believe anyone showed up for that public hearing, but there might be a few council comments that are part of the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Now, I still see two hands raised. I see a Mr. Suiso and Mr. Carson's hand. Both of your hands raised for a reason?
Yeah, I just wanted Heather to elaborate real quick or 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 talk to a point that Mr. Price made. And I would make a point to Mr. Price to approach the city or or elaborate more later on about the businesses he said that were in disrepairing could use our help because I'll have Heather explain to you our facade program and sidewalk programs. We help businesses up and down Main Street all the time, so it's not something uncommon for us to do. I'm not sure what you're talking about in reference to the R V park. But as far as businesses in general, we do encourage and help businesses up and down Main Street, and Heather can explain that more to you. And please, please elaborate on the businesses you say that need repair.
And it's more than just Main Street that the facade loan is available for. It is commercial districts or commercial zones. But I would imagine the prices, immediate concern is the complete disrepair that the street is that runs in front of both both North River and their R V park. And and so it's it's a terrible street. On the good point, it is in our ten year plan for our street reconstruction, but I'm sure it's not coming soon enough for them because it is it is in terrible shape. So I I'll just offer that. I'm not sure we usually have a back and forth, and so if Mr. Price would like to email me any information on businesses that need assistance, we would love to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you.
Mister, Mrs. Suiso?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make note. I took a quick scan at the agenda and a quick scan at the attendees who are not panelists, and I think this is correct, that the public comment portion we have scheduled on the agenda for subsequent comment is the C D B G block grant issue. I don't believe that if anybody wanted to comment on the Conestoga Hut question that that is scheduled later in the agenda for public comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Brooks, but if that is indeed the case, then if people wanted to make a comment on that now at public comment would be the time to do that.
So just to make sure everybody understands that the only item later on that we have a public hearing is for the C D B G. So if anyone from the public wishes to speak on any of the other items on the agenda, now would be the time to raise your hand.
And you can raise your hand by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen, or if you're on a cell phone, you could hit star nine. Okay. I see one hand raised, Ms. Martinez. Okay, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. I will be speaking on the public hearing later, but since now is the time to speak to other items, I do wanna celebrate the city and council for the work that you've done with Saint Benedict's. I know it has not been an easy thing for you to take on. I know it has been filled with controversy, and I just really wanna celebrate your willingness to to engage in difficult conversations with our community, especially those that are supportive of folks who are furthest away from representation and and opportunity and oftentimes need our help the most. So just wanted to lend my support and thanks for for putting that on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Aaron, for your comment. So appreciate that. Okay, so since I don't see any other hands raised and we clarified and we've given people the opportunity to raise our hands, we've had follow up from city staff, attorney and city manager. So we're gonna go ahead and move on down the agenda to consent calendar A. Yes, looks like Counselor Grego.
I'll make a motion with consent calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor Veho. Counselor Veho.
Sorry about that, yes.
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you, Council. Next, on the regular business, we have business brought forward by city staff under item one A, motion authorizing the sponsorship of twenty-three hundred dollars to two entities in varying amounts as detailed in the council communication.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, now that we've done this a few years, this should start to sound very familiar. The annual budget for sponsorship is ten thousand, and what we have historically done is kinda cut out five thousand for the first half of the year and five thousand for the second half of the year. Given COVID and and the timing of the rollout of vaccines and and uncertainty, and then some of the bigger events have shifted to the second half of the year as well. We only received two applications for this round, and that is the Rolling Deep Car Club for the Rolling Deep Car and Bike Show and the Santa Cristo National Heritage Area for the Cinco de Mayo Block Party. The request from the Cinco de Mayo was for two thousand in use of the stage, and the sponsorship committee, which is Counselor Veho and Counselor Daniel, recommended to do that. And then the Rolling Deep Car Club's request was actually for a thousand. Historically, we've given three hundred, which is similar to the other types of events that are at that level. And so the the request was to or the recommendation is to keep it at three hundred with the use of the stage as well, and then the remaining amount to save for the second half where we feel that there will be more requests, especially from some of the larger events that we have funded in the past.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Looks like we have at least three hands raised at this time, and counsel will recognize you in order in which I see your hands raised. Looks like I have Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Veho, then followed by Counselor Grego. Counselor Carson, you up?
Um, I uh, I agree with the with the Sangre de Cristo donation, but I would like to recommend that we bump the Rolling Deep Car Show on up to five hundred dollars. They they rock and rolled pretty good last year to to make their car show happen. During the car show, they had to change in the middle of it. I was there, and I thought they did a pretty good job of accommodating the COVID restrictions and all that, and I think it'll cost them, you know, even probably a little more money this year to to pull it off. And I know we do have a second round, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see that happen, especially being that they were one of the events that did really try and did pull it off last year, and I think that this year they'll probably do a good job as well. And again, it's a little harder to pull this off with with COVID, so I'd recommend that we do think about giving them five hundred dollars. That's my only recommendation instead of the three. I know we historically give them given them three, but being that we only had two applicants, I don't think it's gonna break the bank to give them two hundred dollars more, even though we let them use the stage. Again, they pulled this car show off for over a decade now for sure, maybe two decades. So I think it'd be a great gesture. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Veho, followed by Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanna acknowledge the work of that committee, Ms. Brooks, Jessica Jolly, and myself and Christina. You know, it is hard during COVID, and and there's a lot of unknowns out there and what can and cannot happen in that. I just would like to acknowledge that the use of the stage is also is also a good amount of money as well, and get us giving get us giving that Jeepers, us giving that to them is also a lot of money too. So I think what I think what we have identified to give these folks is perfect.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Veho. Up next, we have Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Right along Counselor Veho's comment, maybe you can refresh my mind on how this thing works. Can every can people come in January, even though they have an event in in September and apply for those monies? I know you've broken you've broken them up into two halves. Can you explain that to me again? Because I really I, you know, that 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 car deal is in when is that, Michael, in in June?
May.
Or May? Father's Day weekend. Normally, they have it at Father's Day weekend.
But what we do, Counselor Gregor Grego, is we advertise it. We also make sure we send it to everyone who's received funding in the past, and we advertise it if you're having an event between January and June to apply for this round. And then the next round would be from July through December, and so we've kinda reserved the the five thousand for each half. Historically, the rodeo has fallen in June, but this isn't confirmed, but we are hearing that they may keep the new date that they did this year or the in twenty twenty, which would be, I believe, in August, so that they're not in this round.
Also, also, if I may, are we seeing more and more people coming for these funds? Whereas going back to Carson's comments, where we would be able to help this other this this car show, is there more people track coming towards that? Maybe that's something that you know, more people or or less people? How does that work, Ms. Brooks?
I don't know if I would say there's more as far as an actual number. Every once in a while, we'll have a new group. Um, but there's always more requests than we have funding. So we've we were never able to fund everybody at a hundred percent for their requests.
Well, I I kinda agree with Mr. Carson. I'd like to see if it doesn't bust the bank, maybe off those guys with the extra couple hundred dollars and and I know historically you've only given three hundred, and I understand Counselor Veho, the cost and the wear and tear on that stage, it it it's it's a lot. So I'd like to see maybe a couple hundred also if if it doesn't bust the bank. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna let Counselor Veho respond since I know he's on that committee, and then I'll go to Counselor Brawls. Okay, Counselor Veho?
Thank you, Mayor, and I and I respect you and Mr. Carson, what you all wanna do with this, but we we it becomes a slippery slope if if we keep, we have ten thousand set aside for this, and if we add a little bit here, add a little bit there, we're gonna, I I I think that everybody should get a little bit, get a little piece of the of the pie. And and no one is ever fully funded, so you know, if if we if we take too much now, we might not be able to help somebody in November or December. So that's that. Those are that's how I think we 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 went about this.
Remind me how much the heritage area area asked for?
So I didn't I glossed over this. They asked for two thousand, but we also had a request from Scott, who is a partner with them, and he requested a thousand from a partnership because of his expenses for the block party. And so what we did is we went ahead and awarded at the two thousand and told them they need to split it with Scott so that it it wasn't fully funded if you were to add both of those applications.
Okay, so looks like, thank you, Counselor Veho for the clarification, and Ms. Brooks, appreciate that. Up next, we have Counselor Brawls.
I just ask Counselor Carson, did the did the group come to you and ask for more money? How'd you get to the five hundred dollars?
Because it's three hundred bucks. No, the group didn't ask me for more money. I was there last year, and I saw the struggles they had with all the COVID regulations. The the fact is, is these are the these are the kinda haggles that I think are pretty trivial. It's two hundred dollars, and they were one of the only events we had last year. And I think it says a lot that they actually put something together when nobody else would. And that's my point. They brought a ton of people to Cole Park. They're gonna bring more people to Cole Park this year, and it's two hundred dollars, guys, and nobody else applied. That that answers that question. We had two applicants, and so the other people did get technically fully funded for what they did because Scott's a business, and and so you know, it is what it is, but it's two hundred dollars at the same time. And and if we funded Sangre de Cristo Heritage Area for two thousand, I I I think, you know, it's a little bit ridiculous to fund these guys at three hundred when the other entity that applied at the same time got so much more. You know, and it's and it's nothing, it's not like, I get it's a cultural event, but it's just a block party. It's nothing, you know, it's it's nothing that's any more significant at the car show, and and actually, the the Heritage Area Block Party's gone on for a few years. That car show again is a staple. It's gone on for Father's Day for twenty years. And and you know, the Quintanas, no, they didn't ask me for more money, but I've seen them work that car show every year, and the whole family's there. Everybody's busting their hump. It's kinda insulting, you know, to just say that their that work is only worth three hundred when this other block party thing that actually, you know, pumps money into a private business is worth two thousand. So you know, you guys gotta enlighten me a little better on that.
Well, my feeling is we have a committee appointed to research.
Yeah, and and I wasn't on that committee. If I'd have been on that committee and had a voice then, I would have spoke this this, I would have spoke my mind at that time. This is the chance I've got, David, so now is when I'm speaking my mind.
I appreciate it. I just, I just think we have a committee appointed, and they came up with the recommendation, and and I and I guess we ought to go with the committee.
No, but just like every other committee, Dave, the committees bring their recommendations to council, and then council has a dialogue about what they feel. We've already got two counselors that feel that way, so we haven't heard from anybody else. So I I say we continue this dialogue and see if anybody else agrees. I'm not I'm not gonna be personally hurt. I just think, you know, it it's not fair that this new block party that's gone on for, I don't remember when this started, but it can't be more than five years. And and that gets two thousand dollars, but this car show that, I mean, really, they, don't get me wrong, it's I'm sure it's a for profit event. I have no clue. But that car show has gone on for over twenty years, and that family busts their hump to pull that off. We went and we saw them last year. We saw them have to rock and roll in the middle and make changes to accommodate Jessica Jolly's mandate, because during the beginning of the car show, they had people actually going around and calling Parks and Rec and and, you know, whistleblowing on them that they weren't fitting fitting the reg or meeting regulations, and they did. And so I think we should give them five hundred bucks, if not for anything else for that.
We got a few more hands raised. I'm gonna go ahead and recognize those people so they can have an opportunity to speak. I believe, Ms. Brooks, you had your hand raised to comment on some of the back and forth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I I felt like I need to clarify two items. The first one, and and I don't wanna get into a debate, but we had in writing what they needed to do regarding COVID, and they weren't necessarily doing it. So the fact that they needed to change while they were out there isn't because our requirements changed. It's their understanding of what they needed to do that we had in writing from them. So I just wanna make sure that we are casting the appropriate color over what that situation was. The other is historically.
Heather, you and I had that same conversation, and that at that time, when we had that conversation, it was clear as mud then to me too. So I don't necessarily agree with your comment. I really don't, and I apologize. That's with all due respect.
That's why I forwarded you the email that we had in writing from them with their signature.
I went, I went through it all at the time. I remember clearly.
So and then moving on from what the committee usually looks at when making these decisions is the budget for what it costs to put on the event. So those that have a smaller budget have a smaller need from a sponsorship perspective compared to those that have higher costs for the event. So those are some of the factors that the committee takes into consideration when when making the recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Counselor Grego?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counselor Veho, I I appreciate the fact that the hard work that you guys all put into this. And you know, it takes a long time, and there's only so much money, but nobody has any questions. I'm gonna try a motion, and then if it doesn't fail, then we'll go to something else. I'll make a motion that we authorize the sponsorship of twenty-five hundred dollars to two entities and five hundred going to the car show people. Make that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Veho, you raise your hand.
Yep, there's a motion and a second on the on the floor. We need to vote on it, but I'm my comment is this, if if we're gonna go down this path, which is fine if council decides to, then we don't need a sponsorship committee anymore. Okay, so let's go. Let's let's vote.
But and I do, I, Counselor Veho, I disagree that because the committee is an advisory board to the council on which direction they feel that we should go. It's not a, it's not a from that committee. It's an advice to council. And like I say, I pointed out the fact that all the hard work, but it's advisory, it's advisory.
I understand that, but you all have voted with our recommendations the last four, three or four times, straight tickets.
Yeah, but do we also, do we now from do this at this point on your slippery slope? Do we vote to disband the planning commission?
And a second on the floor. Let's vote. Come on, motion is second.
Disband the planning commission.
Ms. Martinez, I call the vote.
I'm gonna go ahead and order. So have some order here. Counselor Carson and and Counselor Veho. I'm gonna go ahead and order. So have some order here, Counsel Carson and, and, uh, Counsel V Hill, thank you for your comments as well. So, Ms. Martinez, we have a motion. We have a second. We don't have any further discussion. Will you please call, uh, take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counsel Carson?
Yes.
Counsel V Hill?
No.
Counsel Hensley?
No.
Counsel Griege?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
And Counsel Royals?
No.
Um, I think that's a tied vote. So the motion's three, three.
I'm gonna switch to yes.
No, no, you can't do that. The motion fails. Coleman can propose a new motion.
Okay.
I propose a new motion, funding the $2,500 with the 500 for the car show and the 2,000 for the, the Sangre de Cristo.
Didn't we just have that same motion?
That's the same motion.
Yeah, that was the same motion.
So you're gonna have to redo a motion, someone.
I, I just, what do you mean? I guess I'm confused.
What you said was exactly what Counsel Griege said.
Eric, could I just ask a question more from a legal standpoint, if you don't mind?
Yes.
So when something is tied, then it fails? Is that how that works?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you can't, you cannot re-propose the same motion. Now, you could re-propose a motion to do $510 or $490 or something, and I suppose that's different enough. But you had a motion, it failed.
I propose a motion that we fund the 2,500, that we fund $2,501 with 501 going to the car show and 2,000 going to the Sangre de Cristo Heritage Block Party.
So we have a motion.
And before, before you vote, give just a second to confirm something about whether this is a simple majority vote or whether it's a super majority vote.
Are you guys ready for me to take the?
Not yet. I believe, uh, uh, Mr. Suez is looking at something.
Yeah, that's correct. Give me a second.
It is included in the budget. It's just how we're dividing it up. I don't know if that helps as you're searching.
If we're hitting a $2,500 max and, and that's part of the issue, then I would say that we make the motion either to go, you know, to 1999, Sangre de Cristo and 501 the other way.
You already have a motion on the floor.
Okay, sorry about that.
Counsel Brawls, I'll give you a, a, an opportunity to speak here in a second. When we open it up for comments on this, I see your hand is raised. Okay, so I, I will acknowledge you. I just want to make sure, uh, Mr. Suez has an opportunity to research what he's researching.
Thank you. And, uh, counsel, I was looking at, uh, section nine of Article Three of the, uh, Charter, which provides that approval by a majority of the members present shall be sufficient to authorize any action of council except the passage of any ordinance and the passage of any resolution or motion authorizing the expenditure of money or approving contracts involving the expenditure of money, which shall require the affirmative vote of a majority of the council membership. And now, and so I, that's what I was looking for, was whether it's a super majority. It's a majority of the council membership, which in this case is the same as a majority of the members present because it's four, no matter how you slice it. So go ahead and take your vote now.
Okay, so if you don't mind, since we have waited a while since that motion was made.
All right.
Let, let me, uh, let Counsel Carson say his motion one more time, just so we could be clear on it because I know Counsel Brawls has a question that he wants to bring up.
I would move that we fund the, the donations at $2,501 with 501 going to the Rolling Deep Car Show and 2,000 going to the Sangre de Cristo Block Party.
Okay, and we had someone second that earlier. Was that you, Counsel Griege?
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you.
So now, uh, out of courtesy, I want to make sure that Counsel Brawls, uh, question or concerns is brought up. Go ahead, Counsel Brawls.
Yeah, you know, I, I just don't like playing this game, going $1. I, I used to, I think politically, that's not a good thing to do. Well, I mean, I don't like playing the game over $200. I mean, I, I have the floor. I, I know $1 is $1, but, uh, you know, pretty quickly it'll be $2 and $3. How long are we gonna do this? I mean, uh, I'm, I'm, so far, I'm not compelled to change my vote from what the committee recommended.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Brawls. I appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Uh, Ms. Martinez.
Yes, sir. Um, Counsel Carson?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
No.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Griege?
Yes.
Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Counsel V Hill?
No.
The motion carried four to two with Counselors Broyle and V Hill passing the votes.
Okay, thank you, counsel. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh, 1B, Public Hearing and Motion Authorizing Staff to Submit a Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $540,000 for the design and engineering phases and hiring of the project manager for an early childhood center.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this one's gonna be done a little bit differently. Um, Holly, if you want to let Aaron in, I believe that's who will be speaking. Um, I'll do a little bit of background though, before we turn it over to Aaron on the specific project. Council might recall several years ago, we did partner with SLV Health on their expansion of the cancer services. Um, they were investing a significant amount of funding into that project and wanted to apply for a community development block grant. And while that project had a significant impact on the community, only local governments can apply for that type of funding. And so the partnership with SLV Health was essentially that we would apply as the city, we would pass it through to SLV Health for the, that project, and it was a very successful partnership. Um, we were recently approached by some stakeholders for the early childhood, um, discussions that are going on in the community about their interest in, in doing something very similar. Um, we would apply as the city for the community development block grants in the amount of 540,000 and we would pass it through and the grant management would be conducted by that group. Obviously, Lisa, our finance director, would work with them to make sure that we have the right submissions and grant reports and, and those types of things um, as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Aaron so he can describe the project.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, counsel, for having me in tonight. Um, I, I first want to, uh, recognize that, um, Counselor Hensley, uh, and Counselor Griege were both able to be a part of the No Small Matters presentation um, that happened. Um, I, I don't know Ms. Brooks or, uh, or any of the other council members, if you were also present, but I, I know that those two council members were present, um, which talks a little bit more about the, the issue in our community of affordable, uh, childcare, specifically for infants and toddlers and for those folks who don't qualify for early head start. I think we have some great services, uh, that are available to folks who can qualify for early head start, but there's a gap. Um, there, there's a gap in those services and I think, um, we have some significant data and, and many of you have probably heard that that impacts the ability for businesses to come in, um, and hire employees, uh, because, because they can't find uh, affordable, high-quality childcare. Um, we also have a gap in workforce development. Uh, we, we think that, uh, childcare is a, a place where we could really grow with workforce development. Um, and, and really it's, uh, Sherry and Nicole and folks at the Early Childcare, uh, work on that. They know a whole lot more than I do. Um, so I don't want to get into all those nuts and bolts. I just kind of wanted to paint the bigger picture uh, of what the community need is. And I know that many of you, um, are aware of, of what that need is, so I don't want to go into too much depth. Um, I know that the Boys and Girls Club had approached the city several years ago about the possibility of, um, building a, uh, early childhood or childcare center, um, on our property. Uh, it, it's something that's been on our mind, uh, for a number of years. What was that, Heather, like four or five years ago? Um, at this point, uh, and it's never left the mind of, of the board. Um, we have a beautiful property over there. It, it joins to Friends Park, um, and, and I think brings a lot to the south side of Alamosa. Um, it is also in that corridor, uh, in between, you know, the 10th Street corridor that goes out to the um, elementary schools, the K2 and the 35 building. Um, we've heard from a lot of our educators, our teachers, that there's a need for them to have a place, a safe place with high-quality childcare. Um, so we've been working on a, a design plan, uh, and the opportunity came up for, uh, a CDBG, uh, grant application. Um, I think this is a, a great opportunity for us to do some planning and design. So these funds aren't for the building of a building. Uh, it's really to ask the community what they want. Um, it's to work with some design architects on, uh, a good design and we'll do a process, um, just like what happened with the cancer center to make sure that we, we do some planning and design and, uh, don't just pop up something that our community, uh, may not be interested in. Uh, really excited about the support from the city and, and being willing to be, uh, that fiscal agent that, that does the, um, actual application. Um, and really excited about the support from Early Childhood Council, uh, in their area of expertise. I just got off of a board meeting with my, my board from, uh, 5:00 to, to 6:30, um, and they voted unanimously today, uh, to support this, this application as well. They're really excited, uh, about this opportunity to support young people in our community. Um, I don't have a whole lot more to say, uh, other than I'm really excited about the opportunity, uh, that this provides to bring a really important resource to our community. And if the Boys and Girls Club can be a part of that, we'd love to.
Thank you, Aaron. Really appreciate those, uh, comments. Appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Brooks, before I open it up for public hearing, do we have anyone else, um, part of this team that's gonna make any comments?
Not that I'm aware of, Mayor. Aaron, is there any, there isn't anybody else, is there?
I think we had a couple people on the call, but I think they were happy with me, uh, doing the initial presentation or talk.
Okay, thank you so much for that presentation. Okay, so now I will open up a public hearing. Authorizing the staff to submit, uh, the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of 540,000 dollars. For those of you who are attendees, if you would like to, um, participate, please, uh, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen. If you're on a cell phone, just hit, um, star nine. Um, Ms. Martinez, will you, um, all right, will you, and like, and when, if we have anyone would like to make any comments?
I don't see anybody raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay. So I don't see any hands raised. So since we don't see any hands raised at this time, we're going to now close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Counsel, if you raise your hands, I will recognize you in order that your hands are raised. Uh, first, we have Counsel Brawls, followed by, uh, Counselor Hensley, followed by Counsel Griege.
Yeah, I see that there's a number of stakeholders that are helping out. Uh, what are they contributing? Is money being asked to be contributed? Are they contributing management, work in kind? Can you tell me kind of what the stakeholders' roles are?
So Aaron, can you answer that question?
I, I can certainly try. Uh, so the, the property, the, the land that we would build on belongs to the Boys and Girls Club. Um, the Early Childhood Council, uh, is bringing in their expertise and, and supervision and the, the design, uh, of the building. Um, and, and in some pretty innovative workforce development pieces too, uh, Councilman Broyles. Um, then we have, uh, the school district who's involved. Uh, Ca- Counselor Hensley is also on that, um, from, I think, in, at a state perspective, uh, although she also, uh, carries some good insight as well um, about internships and, and work-based learning and, and things like that. Um, so I, I think a number of stakeholders have gotten together, Councilman Broyles, and, uh, you know, it's like stone soup. We all bring a little bit, uh, to the pot, uh, to help solve this bigger community problem. I hope that answered your, your question.
Yeah, I appreciate that. What age group are we talking about?
Um, so we're talking about early childhood, which is, uh, from infants all the way to age five. And I think we want to focus especially on, uh, lots of rooms for infants and toddlers because that's where the studies show the biggest need is.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Counsel Brawls. And up next, we have Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Griege.
So I, um, obviously I am very involved in this, but I see this being a positive on so many levels. So besides the fact, if you watch any of those videos, it's really, um, hits home to how important it is that foundation for our young kids to have that great beginning. And that when you tie that into everything we're focused on, on economic development for our community, that that ties in then with the idea that if, if we have some phenomenal, um, child, the child learning and childcare is that idea and that can attract more people, more businesses. Um, and then also we have many people who they struggle making those decisions. They're trying to make ends meet with, for their family, but then also having to choose, um, that idea of what to do with their child and sometimes having to settle and that's not feeling very comfortable. So I just see on so many levels. And the other thing is I will tell some, tell you some of the stakeholders that are there as well, and this will be that next level, is to get that investment from a lot of our employers. Um, so we do have representation from Southwest Bank and stuff. They're also starting that conversation. So it's really built, I have to tell you, going to these meetings, the energy and the amount of people that come on a weekly basis is pretty exciting and shows, I think, from all walks of life, that real need that we have here. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Up next, we have Counsel Griege.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, I am a strong, strong supporter of education at any level. And I think this is, would be a perfect building as you come into our community. It's, it's an entrance into our community. And, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that that's where they want to build it because, uh, there had been some talk uh, with this migrant school that's trying to come in, that there was going to be some kind of competition and stuff. So I'm glad to hear that because I, I, when it comes to education of anybody, I, I'm a hundred, a hundred percent for it. So I, like I said, this is a good project and I think, uh, the monies, the CDBG monies is, is Black Brown Money goes, would go properly to something like this. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Griege. So I don't see any other hands raised. So Counsel Griege?
Well, if there's no other questions, I'll make the motion that we authorize, uh, the community block grant in the amount of 540,000 to, for the design and engineer phase of hiring a project manager for an early childhood center.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And counsel, since I am on the Early Childhood, uh, Council Board, I am going to abstain from voting. Um, so Ms. Martinez, will you please note that in the minutes as well? And then feel free to take your vote.
Okay, Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel Griege?
Yes.
Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Counsel V Hill?
Yes.
Counsel Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously with Mayor Coleman abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. Up next, an item, uh, we have a discussion and direction on allowing shelters at the St. Benedict's Campsite. Up next, an item, we have a discussion and direction on allowing shelters at the St. Benedict's Campsite.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do ask a little bit for counsel's patience. I'm going to do a little bit more on the background. Obviously, I think you guys are very familiar on the background, but this remains a controversial issue for our community. So anytime we can make sure to get this information out there, I think it's positive. And so you might remember back in April, as we were facing the impacts of COVID, we were looking at an immediate need for those who were unsheltered. And during that time, the homeless shelter was severely restricted and couldn't take any new ones at that point in time. The buses were shut down and essentially we were a community with unsheltered homeless and nowhere to go during a pandemic. And so it was not a good situation. And the immediate need that we felt that we had for that was to have a location that would have porta potties, trash, running water. People could use it as a hand washing station, those types of things. We were hearing a lot from the community during that time. There is some significant pushback. But also a lot of what we were hearing was the ongoing issues that we would sometimes have with our unsheltered homeless. And we knew from a city perspective that long term, we legally cannot enforce our no camping ordinances. And our inability to enforce that ordinance is what creates a lot of that conflict with the general public. And so what that means is without a place that we could say these individuals could be legally, either at the shelter or at a campsite, then we cannot move them out of the park or off of a trail or off to the river or out of an alleyway. And so we pivoted during that time to address not only that immediate need that we had for COVID, but also the long-term need we had to address our no camping. And when we discussed this campsite, we were very deliberate. We wanted to make sure that we were providing a level of services that were needed, both from a COVID perspective, but also from someone outside of COVID, running water, trash service, a restroom, those types of things are very basic services. We also did add one location where they can charge. It's not to run heaters. It's not to do anything like that. But it's for their cell phones and those types of things, which during the pandemic is important. But then also for them to check their benefits or other things at other times, it's important. And we did add Wi-Fi for a minimal cost. So as we looked at this, we wanted to also make sure that we were not serving as an attraction for those who might just be passing through to entice them to stay longer. And I think counsel felt comfortable with this balance of services. Last week, I was provided an opportunity for Mr. Osborne and David is on the call if you guys have questions about the funding. But he does feel that we could put in a request for funding for approximately twenty-five thousand that could help us build very minimal shelters. And on your council communication, we did put a sample of what that might look like. And so I'm going to share my screen quickly. And so this example is about six feet by ten feet. It's not fancy. It would not have electricity. It would not have running water. It would not have anything like that. But I want to make sure that you guys know this is just an example. And what we could do is look at purchasing maybe approximately ten, placing that at the campsite. Now, the staff has reviewed this. We feel there are some pros and cons and we just want to be very straightforward with that. From a pros perspective, we do have a team in our community that has been looking at the winter months, the cold weather months, and what can be done for the unsheltered homeless. And it's not as easy as finding a vacant building. You have to staff buildings. There's a lot of cost associated with that. Where they've landed is to try to buy sturdier tents and little heating buddies. So this situation with this type of hut or something similar to this design would present a much better situation, a safer situation during the winter months. It would hold the heat better and it would be safer. Another pro or a positive point is that they would look better than some of the tents and stuff that we have out there right now, a little more organized and clean. Another item that we have gotten questions on and La Puente was looking at maybe putting some lockers out there is that sometimes people have their stuff stolen. And so these units do lock. So it does address that issue as well. So on the con side, the thing is, how do we weigh this in regards to trying to make sure that we're not taking on too much? And that there is still an encouragement for those who are able to move out of homelessness, to move out of homelessness and not come here from a service perspective. And so there is that consideration. Staff, as far as what our recommendation is that we feel strongly on is if counsel decides that you do want to allow these, we would recommend that there's probably some parameters. I don't think we need to discuss all of them tonight. My recommendation would be that if you want to allow this, that staff could talk with our homeless coalition as well as our homeless COVID task force and our community partners involved with homelessness to develop something that we think are appropriate, an appropriate structure. But some ideas, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, we may want a time limit. I don't know what that time limit is. I don't know if it's six months, a year, eighteen months, but we may want to talk about a time limit. Do we want to have a priority for those who lived in the valley and became homeless compared to someone who might have lived in Pueblo and was passing through? Do we want to have a priority for families or disabled or veterans, some things like that? The other item is for staff to feel comfortable in this moving forward. We would want a community partner to be willing to do what I would call intake. So they would identify the people who would maybe be eligible to stay in this, how long they're eligible. If we do have priorities, those types of things and could handle who gets the keys to these items. And so with that, I will open it up for council discussion. And again, Mr. Osborne is on the line. If you have any questions about the funding, he is available.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brooks. Really appreciate that. So what I am going to do now is I'm going to recognize counselors by your hands being raised right up. Now I see this order, Counsel Hensley, followed by Counsel Brawls, followed by Counsel Grego. Counsel Hensley, you're up.
So, hmm, I guess my question is, I definitely, I've been supportive all along. I think it's important to have that area. Where does, where are we at with La Puente? Are they open now? Are they letting people in? I guess I just I, 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 I guess answering some of those questions start there. We'll go from there.
So they are still restricted because they, because people are living there. It's, it's, so even though we're going through better colors on the dial, there are still restrictions. So normally they could be around fifty people. Right now, they're around thirty. They are able to do intakes when they have vacancies. And so when they do, they are getting new people in. The part that further impacted us though is sometimes during the winter time, they are able to clear out some of those larger rooms and put in cots, which then obviously we couldn't do this year. Now I will say La Puente's, that's not maybe the best situation either, even outside of COVID. Because we could have two, three months of severe cold where every night they're clearing out those community rooms and putting in cots and those types of things. There are some individuals who cannot stay in the shelter either because they've timed out or they have some other issues that are going on. But Lance, or let me see if, let me look to see if there is someone from La Puente because I kind of hate talking on their behalf as well. So I do know Shanae, I see you. Can, Holly, can we bring Shanae over in case I am fumbling this answer?
And while we're bringing Shanae in, I also, I guess my question would be, is are they taking part of this ownership to this proposal?
So we're having discussions. I think like any organization, similar to what the city did of, we don't have this staffing to be able to keep track of who's in there. Now, we do have our officers who patrol there at least once daily and can be the bad guys if someone's breaking the rules. But we are still having those discussions and I think La Puente is needing to do a very honest gut check on if they have the capacity to do it as well. There's a few other partners I was going to call to see if they could partner with us on this intake part of it as well. Shanae, did I mess anything up on answering La Puente's role during the winter time? And you're on mute. There you go.
There we are. Hi Heather, thanks for the invite. I think you've done a really good job of illustrating the story at the shelter. I think it's important that we've taken some time to get to this point. I think right now during COVID, it's become increasingly apparent that the gap is that there isn't a warm, safe place for folks. And if the shelter, and if the shelter isn't an option for folks, which it really hasn't been a stable option for many years. Right? So we've always had the issue of folks trying to find a warm space to be safe in, I mean overnight. And our conversation this year has been around warming shelters and it's been really hard to find a building that could be potentially the warming shelter. I mean, for liability issues for, I mean, who's going to own the space? What space is going to be chosen? And then the, I mean, the next question is, if we can't find a building, then is a tent a really the next best solution? Or is there, is there something else? And I think what, what David Osborne has presented here is just that something else. It's the in-between. It's not quite a tent situation. It's not quite camping and it's not quite a warming shelter. But it is something that could actually keep people safe and warm and can prevent potential, I mean, exposure in the future. As far, I mean, as far as La Puente goes, what they're doing is, I mean, there's, we're still providing meals. So folks can come for meals, but folks can't come and sit inside and sit across from each other at at a table and have dinner or lunch together anymore. So there still is kind of that, that cold crisis that's a potential, right? There's people who haven't been indoors for days, weeks, months, it feels like. So is that answering your question, Heather, a little?
Yes, thank you, Shanae. I just wanted to make sure I was accurately reflecting both during COVID time and non-COVID time. Because obviously this would carry beyond just from a COVID perspective. Counselor Hensley did that. Did we, were we able to jointly answer your question?
Yes, and I do have just one more thing is, so I know it obviously protects from weather and it says that it's insulated, but obviously when we get to this cold, I mean, even now I know in my house, we got the heater on, but it's a little chilly. So is there going to be heating? Is that, is there, could people set fires? You know, like putting little campfires in there. I guess I just want to make sure also on that. And is it enough protection and/or is there going to be more expense in regards to heating, sort of what that looks like?
So right now, the, the plan was to do sturdier tents with a heating device, not electric. But kind of, and they're, and they're still researching to see if there's better things. So this is almost swapping out the tent and putting it as a hut. So the heating would then still be something that the little heating buddies or if they can find something better, because those do go through propane type of, type of situation pretty quickly.
Expence to the city?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Shanae, you might want to hang around just in case other council members have comments, just in case. Up next, we have Counsel Brawls, followed by Counsel Grego, then Counsel Carson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I appreciate people wanting to, to help the homeless. And I welcome anybody who wants to contribute or work on a project out there. But my concern is, is to protect city resources. Don't get too involved. And in these shelters, I can see them being in need of repair. And who's going to do the repair and keep them up to date and keep them updated? And who's going to check them in, check them out? I just don't want the city to have, you know, all that burden fall upon the city. I think we need somebody to manage that from the outside. And then those things can easily become a disrepair. And who's going to keep up on repairs? That's my question.
So Counselor Broyles, thank you for asking that because that's a question I received from someone else and so I should have addressed that. We are being very straightforward with Mr. Osborne and our partners on this and that this is not where the city's going to have a line item in order to maintain or replace these items. And so if they become in disrepair, either we need volunteer efforts or someone to write a grant, a partner agency to write a grant in order to fix it, or they just may need to be removed. They won't be permanent. So if something like that happens, they can be easily removed. And then if someone sets fire or something like that, then, then we would just need to dispose of it. So I've been very straightforward that this is not, with the city will, if we entertain the idea of allowing these to be placed, while we might own them because it's on our property, we are not creating an ongoing expense to maintain or replace them.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Brooks, for clarifying that. Up next, we have Counsel Grego, followed by Counsel Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. You talked about in the communication that these things could be built for two hundred and fifty to five hundred. Is that correct?
So that number that, because it was kind of a picture. I couldn't just cut off the words, unfortunately. It came with the whole thing. So that's if we had all the materials. But if we were going to order the materials and all of that, then that's when we're talking probably closer to two thousand five hundred. Additionally, Mr. Osborne's aware of a gentleman in the valley who might be able to fabricate some of these types of shelters. So they wouldn't look exactly like this, but they could serve the same purpose. And then that way we could keep the money in the valley. So that's why I really want to make sure we don't fixate too much on what the example picture was.
And that's why I was wondering, when you said two hundred and fifty to five hundred, we were only going to do ten of them. I said, where's the rest of the money go? But, oh, I, I, I think it's a good idea. I went out there today and is there like a roll-off or something for camps that are abandoned? And it seems like there's a lot of abandoned camps there and, and they're just, there's just a slew of like piles of trash everywhere. Is there like somewhere where, or do we go in there, Heather? I know we try to keep our people from not being so involved in there, but do we go in there and pick up all those abandoned deals and toss them into those roll-offs?
So what we are having, so we do have trash out there. We do have people in our community who live in homes who are, who are dumping things. Like they, they want to get rid of a couch and they're bringing it out there instead of where they need to take it, like the landfill. So we do have a little bit of that issue, which is not the fault of those who are using it. But then we also do have some issues of, you know, keeping their campsite clean and those types of things. And so we need to get better at it. We do have in the rules that they're supposed to keep it clean. The chief can make sure that we're staying on top of that and that our officers are prompting them to get it cleaned up. We also talked about maybe once every other month or so, coordinating maybe a cleanup out there just to help motivate that. So there's things we're still needing to work through on making sure it's kept clean.
Also, I guess a lot of people bring stuff out there and they come to that gated area that's gated where you can and they just pile stuff there. Today, I, somebody must have brought some fruits and stuff and the deer were in there eating the the vegetables and stuff. So I don't know if there's an answer of where we could, if there's an area where we, if people bring food or they bring, I saw some, like you're saying, maybe somebody just dumping their couches and stuff. I saw some chairs there right by that, you know, that gate that is locked there. Is there a way that we could probably? Is there a way that we could probably, I don't know how we can address where they can leave food or, or, or or stuff that the people are leaving stuff there.
So they're not supposed to leave stuff and if the sign's not up, we're getting them made, but we're putting signs up of no dumping. But the problem is, is that people may not follow the sign type of thing. So that, so we just, we need people to stop.
Heather, I did see that sign. It's a big sign that says no dumping there, but I think these people are bringing food and stuff. And not thinking that so much is that they're dumping, it's just that they want to provide some food or something for these people that are, that are there, so.
Then they should walk into the camp and find somebody and, and give it to them.
Also, one more thing there. There's like a ditch there, I guess it's where we lea-, we release our geothermal water. It's into this ditch from that well that we have out there. And it's, you can see the, you can see the smoke coming up where that water is really warm. Is that something that we keep cleaning there? Maybe that might be a, a question for Harry, you know, it seems like we're releasing water in there. And I thought that belonged to somebody's ditch, but it's, it's coming from our geothermal well that we have out there.
Yeah, that's correct. That's the downfall from our geothermal well on Twentieth Street. So that's just the, the overflow. That ditching goes out to kind of a slure contained area to the south.
Because it seems like those people are using that water. It's warm. I put my hand out there and it's warm, warm water.
Yeah, it's certainly warm. Yeah, it's a hundred and I think five degrees.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grego, and thank you, Harry, so much for your response. Okay, up next, we have Counsel Carson, followed by Counsel Hensley.
Heather, I'm not sure if I missed it, but where was the, was there already a criteria built in or like some sort of structure? As far as the you know, the availability of the huts? Cause I, I did agree or, or do really want to support at one point for sure and not to be callous. But I would really think that it would, it would have to be, you know, priori, it would have to prioritize people in the valley, I would, I would think first. And, and people with children, I would think. And then, you know, outwardly from there, but I would also think that we would want we would want it to be a pass-through and, and for there also to be with that pass-through in mind, be a, a limit of like forty-five to sixty days. I don't know, I don't know what an acceptable time is, you know, I know when someone settles in and then, you know, but then also winter's long. But I, I would really like to support the main point of, we would like to, you know, prioritize people that are from here and not just people that are just, you know, stopping real quick. So with that, I would say, you know, I would support it being that it doesn't cost us.
So Counsel Carson, yes, I did kind of review that. What I'd like to avoid, so everything you said was perfect for me to have direction. I'd like to avoid though for all of us to start debating how long and what the priority. But if you guys can just make it clear that yes, you want some priorities around those areas. Have that discussion on it's not permanent. Because my recommendation is maybe for that level of the weeds, the homeless coalition might be a, a good group to, to provide some on that as well. But your direction of liking that there needs to be some structure, I think is really, really good direction.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Carson. Up next, we have I thought I saw one more hand up. Was it yours, Counsel Hensley or Counsel Veo? No? Okay.
Mayor, I have one comment.
Go ahead.
Do we need to some kind of a, a motion or something to allow this or what's the process there, Counselor?
So Mayor, what my recommendation would be is if council wants to allow it, yes, we do want a motion. And if that motion could be that we would allow the shelters with some of the structure identified in the communication. And with a community partner that meets the satisfaction of staff, that it doesn't create a burden on, on the city type of situation. Something along those lines.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. You said it just perfectly.
Okay, we have a motion. A second, any further discussion? Looks like Counsel Veo has some further discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Does, does the county have any input on this or say?
Well, so I plan on sharing it with our COVID task force on Friday, but there's no cost to us. So, I mean, so we'll make them aware of it, but it's our property, the, the campsite is. And so we're going to make them aware of it. They also have a representative on our homeless coalition, so they'll be a part of those discussions as well. It just wasn't, it wasn't worth pulling more community partners into this discussion if us as the property owners were not interested in allowing it. So this is really the first step.
Okay, then I, I, I was listening for this, on this discussion and I respect and I agree with a lot of what you all said. I don't want the, the city to be on the, on the major hook for this all the time. I agree with Mr. Carson about putting time limits and you know, people with families, people from Alamosa first, maybe veterans, you know, that type of thing. But I think, thinking long-term and big picture, there's a lot of cities and towns across the country who are going. Because the homeless issue is only going to get worse folks with, with our current financial situation in our country. I think it would behoove us to, to think big picture a little bit and maybe like tiny homes. Set up, and, and again, it's a huge discussion. But a lot of cities are going to tiny homes for people who are homeless. As kind of pass-throughs to get them back on their feet and that type of stuff. And then I also think too that we need to keep us and La Puente, I think need to do more reaching out to our, our our churches, you know, the Catholic Church, the Mormon Church, all these folks. Because I, I, I think they need a seat at the table too, and I think they can help a lot with some of this stuff too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Veo and Ms. Brooks. I see your hand raised.
So I want to, because this is surprisingly come up as a discussion. About a year ago, on the staff level, when we were looking at the housing assessment and some of what the needs are and the property that the city owns and some of it jointly with the county. And this growing partnership with the SLV Housing Coalition. So we've been tossing around ideas for the tiny homes and who would manage it, where they'd be built. But we're waiting for the housing assessment to be completed to make sure that we have the data to really drive some of those partnerships. But the, I want to assure you, Counsel Veo, that's actually been on our radar for over a year at this point in time. It's just, we need to make sure we have the right partnerships and we have the data to really drive the city being at the table. And so the other part is, as a reminder, on our, our homeless coalition, we do have a representative for the faith community. And as we're pulling together what resources exist for homelessness, we are identifying those churches, churches that either have volunteers that are very active or if they're able to contribute and, and those types of things as well. So we're trying to get more organized in assessing that involvement from the faith community.
Okay, Counsel Veo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that, for that information Heather. And then another piece to, to this discussion, I think, and it's also big picture. And, and I, I brought this up like three or four years ago and, and it was, I don't think it was too popular then. But I think we have talked about it during that time as an idea, maybe something just to look at. But there's also a lot of other cities and towns in our country that are offering some sort of very small but work program that we get our, our homeless folks working, cleaning up trash, doing something. Just to help them get back on their feet and, and to get out of poverty. Or get them off the street and into a home. So again, that's another long-term discussion, but something I'd like to bring up again. And maybe we could talk about it in a work session sometime this year. Thank you.
I just want to remind Counselor, we talked about it at a retreat where I was proposing to add to our line item about ten thousand dollars and we could contract with another entity. We don't want them as our employees. But we could do a work program and put that in a line item. And there was not enough council interested in that time. So that might change as this goes forward, but I just want to make sure, you know, that was about a year ago type of situation for that discussion.
Was that a retreat or a work session?
It was a retreat. It was the same time we discussed creating the line item, the, to pay for bus tickets. So if someone needed to connect with their family in a different community or other resources, my recommendation was to create the line item both for bus tickets and a work program. And council was only interested in the bus tickets.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Up next, Counsel, Counsel Carson.
I just wanted to ask Heather if it's too late to add that to one of our agenda retreat items or in the future to discuss it. Because I agree with Counsel Veo, I think we need to, to do that. I, I've, I've looked at and, and at the time, we can discuss it, but there is cities that have had a lot of success with that. And, and you know, these people have really gotten the leg up and, and they're a morale booster by getting involved in these work programs. So I think if we can add it, maybe at least have a discussion about it again for our retreat, please, I would appreciate that as well.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I don't see any of the hands raised, so no further discussion. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Grego?
Yes.
Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Counsel Veo?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to item D on the agenda, committee reports. If anybody have any committee reports, please raise your hand.
There's one more item.
Yeah, one more item under.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Yeah, we do have one right. Two A, a motion authorizing the city manager to sign a WorkWell master service agreement. I believe that's you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have to say, from when I started with the city and we did not have an HR professional, we, the city manager and the city clerk shared those duties. We have come a long ways in, in what our professionalism is related for human resources. And this is just another step forward in the sophistication of that. When we look at hiring for some of our positions that have a physical nature to the job, such as police or fire parks, public works. We would like to be able to do a pre-employment physical test that ensures that that hire is capable of doing the job. And it's both for their safety, but it's also for the safety of the crew they're going to be on and for the city's liability. In the same philosophical thought, if we have an employee who's injured themselves, we want to make sure before they return back to work that they can physically do the job. And the example I give from working in another community, we had a firefighter who had a heart attack. And the cardiologist signs off and, and says, okay, the heart's fixed and, and everything works. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's healed to the level that he could do the fire job. And, and there's a lot of stress on the heart for the firefighters. And so then he would go through a different test to make sure that he could return to work and, and would not put himself at risk. And that other test actually caught that, that there really was not a way that he could do that without jeopardizing his, his health. So it's a different type of test than what you get when someone does the, the initial surgery and says that it's healed. It's to make sure the employee can return safely back to work. Since this can impact employment, it's important that it's objective and that we can defend it legally. Which is why we would like to have this contract with the WorkWell Master Service Agreement. And they would be partnering with the ROMP clinic who does our other health testing. We do, from a funding perspective, we had put forty thousand in the budget for the market analysis. We were able to secure a contract for nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five. So we actually have a savings of twenty thousand. We think this work will only be around eleven thousand, but as we finalize the job descriptions and, and the testing, we would like to have a motion to not exceed fifteen thousand, just in case there's a little bit of movement once we get further into these discussions. So it doesn't even use all the savings, but since this was not included in the budget, we needed to bring it to council for authorization.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. So Counsel Grego?
Yes, you talked about the, the fifteen thousand. Is this a, a one-time deal or an annually fifteen thousand? For this deal?
So the, the biggest chunk is to, they have to review the job descriptions and they have to create the test. Once that's up and running, unless we need to tweak it or to make sure, then it's just, we pay for the ROMP clinic to run them through the test. So there is that tiny bit of ongoing of paying the ROMP clinic to run the test. But as far as with our relationship with this entity, it's to create what is legally defensible for those tests.
And this ongoing payment will come out of where, from her?
Our HR budget. But again, if it prevents workplace injuries.
Well, I, I agree with you, I, you know, but I just wanted to see where the funding was coming from and how the ongoing funding was going to continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Grego. Counselor Hensley?
So just to get a little clarity, so would this be something where anybody who then applies for jobs, if it was a specific one, they would need to do this test to get the job?
Correct.
And then if, you used as your example, if somebody got injured and obviously in one sense, they say, okay, you're good to come back. It takes X amount of time, but then going through this other testing, they say you can't come back. Then does that add to, so if it's a work-related situation, could then intentionally be a little bit more work, workman's comp or that type of thing? And or, pardon?
It could end their employment. So if they're not able to return to work, then they may not be able to work for the city.
And I guess, and so I'm, I'm pretty surprised, so can you, I know you gave the heart attack situation. So is it something where it's from a health standard? Like, I guess I'm just trying to understand, is it real nitpicky as far as weeding people out? Or is it something at a high threshold and that's why they couldn't be able to come to work?
So when you're talking about the so when you have a full-time fire department, they're sleeping, the alarm goes off and they have to jump into action and, and get dressed and, and get out there and do it quickly. So there's a lot of studies out there, scientific studies of what capacity your heart has to be able to have in order to have that, that quick jump start type of thing. So they would have a, a, a range of what is safe for when they test. There's a, a stress test for the heart type of thing. If you do a different thing, say if we have an employee who had a knee injury and the orthopedic surgeon fixes it and they release them because that injury is fixed. But if that employee has a physical job where they're stooping and squatting a lot and needing to lift, they would have, they'd go through those things to make sure they still have the range of motion and, and that can safely do those, those jobs. And so they're not trying to weed people out intentionally. They're trying to set the parameters of how they can physically be safe and do the job. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands. Okay, Counsel Grego?
One more, Mayor Vamaya. So this is going to be part of our, I guess, a contract. If I, I go to work for the city and I go through, I guess, the contract that you guys put together for an employment, I'll have to go through this test in order to get, let's say, a job at Public Works or whatever.
So we don't do contracts. That's a big thing. So we don't do contracts. And the, because the testing is going to be specific to the jobs. So that's why there's a little bit of a Um, and the, because the testing is going to be specific to the jobs. So that's why there's a little bit of a, so if there's a job that doesn't do any squatting or lifting, but it does do a lot of bending over or something, then they're only going to test the bending over. Um, if it's from a police officer perspective, they have to be able to run if they have to chase a suspect. So they're going to make sure they have the ability to run. Um, they don't time them or, you know, do that kind of stuff. Um, but it's to make sure from a health perspective that the employee can actually do the physical parts of the job. In our job descriptions, we've always listed, you have to be able to do this physical stuff. We just didn't have a way to test for it that's legally defensible. And so it's it's a really big deal to have these types of things when you have physical jobs because it protects the person from getting into a job that could end up hurting them. That firefighter would have died if he would have come back to work, very likely. So it protects the person, but it also protects the crews because if if we have an individual and they're, they're in a a ditch and they're shoring stuff up and and someone physically can't do it, there can be an accident that hurts the crew type of situation. It is a liability issue for the city.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. If someone would like to uh bring a motion.
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the WorkWell Master Service Agreement not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second.
We have an emotion and a second. Any further discussions? I just have one comment. Um, Heather, I'm really glad to see the city moving in this in this direction. Um, it really is going to help our team. I think it's a benefit for, it protects the people, it protects the crews, it protects the city. Uh, and I'm glad that we're going down this road. So thank you all for pursuing this. Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Vio?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. Now we're down to committee reports. Okay, do we have any committee reports? If so, raise your hand and I'll make sure I recognize um you in order. Okay, uh, Counsel Grego?
Yes, Mayor, uh, we had our uh Rec Raisin Advisory Board meeting this past Tuesday. And uh, there was talk about policy, uh, the Bank of Vista Fish and Regulation ordinance, changes to that. We looked at uh some potential ranch conservation easements. We had some discussions on the RV park update. Heather gave a good uh update on the RV, the situation with the RV. And then they talked about the different uh uh, the new hours for for the summertime. And now you don't have to, you don't have to make reservations to go to the uh rec. You still have to sign in and do the, all the rest of the stuff, but you don't have to do the reservation, so. It was a pretty good discussion.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. And and Counsel Grego, myself and Heather, we are all participate on that board and uh just one other thing too, Counsel Grego, and thank you for bringing that up too. They also discussed some of the twenty twenty-one, I believe, CIP projects and things too in that meeting as well. So it was a very good productive meeting, everyone. Okay, do we have any other uh comments? Okay, no more committee reports. So now we're going to go down to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I think Chief Anderson was just going to give an update. We had a a building that was very dilapidated and we had put it through the process of notifying it from a demolition perspective and we're getting ready to demolish that now. So Chief Anderson, are you on?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's good to see everybody. Uh, just a quick update. The address we're discussing is eleven oh nine Bell Avenue. Um, it's been a project for about two and a half years now, so it's been a while. Uh, but we've finally gotten to the point now with the help of our, of our uh city building inspector, Steve Kopley, he's helped out quite a bit, kind of pointing us in the right direction. So we have now made it to the point, I guess I can start off at the beginning. When this occurred, it was a structured fire. The building was deemed to be unsafe. Um, we've had a lot of issues there. We really had to address it. And we posted the building as being unsafe after an inspection was done of the building. After we did that, we mailed several certified letters to the owner of the residence at the time. Um, that property was sold since then to another individual um back in, I believe it was two thousand eighteen when it was actually sold on a tax lien. Um, we, she now inherited all the problems that came with that building. Um, so we started advising her of of what the situation was and asking for compliance, what needed to be done so that the building was not considered unsafe. Um, unfortunately, we've received no compliance whatsoever. Um, and we have given a a reasonable amount of time for these these issues to be addressed. And unfortunately, they have not been, so we have to move along with what our our policies are to make sure that the aesthetics of the city, specifically the eleven hundred block of Bell Avenue is is cared for just as much as any part of the city. Um, so we are now at the point where they are currently requesting bids for the demolition. And we still need to wait for the permit to uh come back from the state with an approval. I think I've covered everything on that. Does anybody have any questions?
And we will issue whatever the final cost is. We will issue a lien on the property for that, but it's, you know, we'll see how that goes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think I saw Counsel Carson raise his hand uh physically like this. No? All right, so any other comments? Okay, any other staff announcement?
No, Mayor, that was the only one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so now we come down to uh council comments. And if you would, council, raise your hand. I'll make sure I recognize you in the order in which your hand is raised, okay? Up first, we see, I see uh Counselor Vio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to uh offer my condolences to uh a man that I met through CML, Val Vio from Thornton, Colorado. He passed away. Um, maybe only talked to him three or four times over the last five years, but every time he talked to us, he was just so welcoming to our group from Alamosa. Um, Val was a city counselor in Thornton, also a state rep, I believe. Um, Charlie, I think it was Charlie's really good friend and that, but just somebody who always looked out for um the valley and Alamosa and that and our condolences for, from us. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Vio, thank you for bringing that up. I think he was also a trustee here at Adam State College. So he did, he did a lot, you know, and I I know Liz probably from working with with CML, he was quite a man and gave a lot to his community and to the state, period. So thank you for bringing that up and uh, our condolences go to his, to his family.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I remember he was one of the first uh council people I got a chance to meet that wasn't in our um city, and he was always welcoming and shared a lot of good, helpful information. He he will be missed. So do we have any other um council uh comments at this time? Okay. Wow, being that I don't see any hands raised at this time, I can't tell you that this meeting is officially adjourned. Take care, everybody. Have a super fantastic night. Don't let.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.